Good evening, everybody. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. All right, kicking us off tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, disclosure of conflict of interest. Do any councillors have any conflicts of interest on any of the votes that they will take this evening? Okay, seeing none. At this point, I would like to make a, um, look, I need a motion, please, to take the agenda out of order to move Resolution 133 2025 to the next order of business.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, we don't have anybody online. All those in favor? You can't vote yet. Thank you. It's good practice, though. I appreciate, like, working out. I can probably tell. Um, okay, any discussion? Seeing, okay, great. Um, okay, so also, since we're doing this at this point, can I also make a, have a motion made to take the, um, read by title only for the agenda?
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
And all those in favor? Very good, Scott. Um, okay, moving on to Resolution 133 2025.
Canvasing of votes and determination of results of the Ward Six Special Election held on June 24th, 2025.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Beal, will you please join me to the podium?
Well, hold on one second. Before we do that, we gotta just, we gotta vote on this first, so. Any comments, concerns with the, with the outcome of the election or the votes or anything like that?
Congratulations, Scott. This is awesome.
Okay. Um, seeing none, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Craigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Gerard?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Now, the moment Scott's been waiting for. Everybody's been waiting for. So councillors, thank you.
All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Robert Scott Beal Jr.
Do swear?
Do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities?
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me?
The duties incumbent on me.
As a duly elected member?
As a duly elected member.
Of the city council?
Of the city council.
Of the city of Waterville.
The city of Waterville.
Thank you. Welcome.
All right, um, moving up next is a presentation from Camoin Associates. Matt, I know you wanted to kick it off, so if you wouldn't mind?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm on? Great, thank you. So, just a little background before we let Camoin take the stage here. In 2023, we applied for a grant through the U.S. Department of Agriculture to study the economic impact of our recreational assets. We looked into firms that do these studies and landed on Camoin Associates in 2024. They had a ton of experience. We actually called on some of their references. Great track record. It was really, uh, it was a pretty easy selection. So we're very happy to have them here tonight, anxious for everyone to hear the report. Um, over the years, I've recognized, and probably most of you recognize, that our recreational assets have, they've grown, they've evolved, they've improved. Um, we want to be able to kind of quantify what our assets are and share with as many people as we can how valuable they are to this community and that they deserve investment and that they bring in investments. Um, so we worked with Camoin to identify eight assets that they'll be sharing more information with you about soon. Um, and yeah, that's, that's about it. Real happy to have, so Tori Conroy on the left-hand side, she was the lead for the project. Rachel and Dawn were also instrumental. Um, Tori and I went back and forth. You know, I want to thank all the people from the assets that were selected for all of their input. I think they were all forthcoming and, and open with Tori and her team. So I think we have a pretty complete report here and anxious to hear the summary. So Tori, I'll let you take it away.
Hi, everyone. I don't know if you can hear us, but I, we cannot hear anything coming from the meeting.
Okay, one second. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay. Well, listen, I'm gonna give you a real quick thing. Matt said you guys were awesome and he appreciated everything that you did, so, yeah. Take it away.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that lovely introduction. I saw Matt sit down. I'm like, uh-oh, that might be, that might mean it's our turn. Uh, well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. Um, I'm Rachel Selsky, the CEO at Camoin Associates, and it has been just such a pleasure to work with the city of Waterville on this project. Um, I'm here today with Tori and Dawn from our team who will be going through some of the key findings and the various work that we've done through this project, the target industry analysis, as well as the economic and fiscal impact analysis for outdoor recreation. Um, we really loved working on this project. Camoin Associates has worked all around Maine and the Northeast with a particular focus and passion for myself, but also my team here on outdoor recreation. And I find that sometimes outdoor recreation is kind of thought of as like a nice-to-have, but really, when you dig into the numbers, and especially for places like Maine and for Waterville, these are real drivers of the economy. And projects like this allow the ti, the city, the residents, the visitors to understand the importance of recreation in terms of creating a sense of place, attracting residents to come and live there, providing opportunities for families, attracting visitors, and therefore attracting business. So I really applaud you all for taking the time to do a, a project like this, again, looking at outdoor recreation. I think it allows, impact studies allow communities to better understand the return on their investment. So as you're considering investing in different programming or facilities, what is that return on your investment in terms of new dollars coming in to the city and paying tax revenue and spending time and money in your community? Uh, and so that's one of the really strong benefits of doing an impact analysis on any type of project, but particularly outdoor recreation. And then in terms of the target industry analysis, I always think it's important, you, you need to know your numbers in order to make informed decisions. And so by really digging into the outdoor recreation industry in Waterville, you're able to better understand where your strengths are, possibly where there's opportunity to grow or continue to invest to support those certain types of industries or jobs that are particularly strong in your community. So with that, I just kind of wanted to applaud you all for taking the initiative to do this project. We loved working on it. We, it was a very collaborative process. You'll hear from Tori and Dawn, all the different people we had to gather information from, and everyone was very willing and lovely to work with to give us all the, the data about the visitation. So just a, a really positive experience for us as well, working with Matt. Um, I know I couldn't hear his introduction, um, but I'm sure it was a glowing, glowing review, like you said. But thank you so much for having us this evening. This has been a, you know, a long project in the works, and we're really happy to be here. So, uh, our plan for tonight is to kind of talk a bit about the project, talk about our methodology, so high-level impact numbers, as well as the target industry analysis. Uh, so with that, I'll hand it over to Dawn, who will kind of set us up in terms of the project overview.
Awesome. Uh, yeah, so as Rachel just kind of mentioned, this project was really kind of broken down into two key parts. The section we're gonna cover first is the economic impact analysis, uh, where we looked at the annual impact of key recreational assets in the city of Waterville. Um, and the second part of the analysis, which we will touch on later in this presentation, is that, um, industry analysis piece that Rachel mentioned. Um, and then one other thing I want to mention, just while we are on this slide, is that for this project, the area associated with that zip code, the 04901, um, is what we use to represent the city of Waterville. And that's because our primary input-output model and our primary data collection system doesn't have it, doesn't have data available by municipality. Um, it's broken down by the zip code, um, so that's sort of the closest we could get. Um, that being said, the city of Waterville, as of 2023 numbers, does have just over about 60% of the population of that zip code area. Um, so it's reasonable to assume that trends at that zip code level are gonna be similar to trends at the city level and vice versa. Um, great. So before we really get into what the analysis found, I want to briefly talk about what economic impact analysis even is. Um, so an ec, an economic impact analysis estimates how new money entering a region affects the local economy. Um, so in this case, we looked at how Waterville's outdoor recreation assets generate increased spending at local businesses from people coming into the city specifically to use those recreation assets. Um, so for example, if a family travels from Portland to use the Quarry Road trails, the money they spend while in Waterville is what we're interested in. Um, and that type of spending is also what we consider to be, um, the net new spending, and it's what we end up using as the direct input, um, into our model, or that direct impact. Um, now, these direct impacts have multiplier effects as that money works its way through the economy. Um, and so you have your indirect impacts, or that is, um, impacts that are created through business-to-business spending, as well as induced impacts, or impacts that result from the spending of employees who are supported by this net new activity. Awesome. So how did we get to that net new spending number? Um, we did that through the creation of visitor spending baskets. Um, so to do this, we make assumptions about how much time and as a result, how much money individuals will spend during their visit to the city of Waterville. Um, and the table on this slide kind of outlines each of these spending baskets by length of visit. Um, and we put these together from the main Office of Tourism report. Um, and we use them for, uh, spending estimates for all of the various recreational assets that we looked at. Um, great. So using the spending baskets from that previous slide and then out-of-town visitation numbers, which we collected through interviews with program, program directors, excuse me, um, we were able to estimate the total amount of net new spending that could be attributed to any one of the eight given assets that we looked at in the city of Waterville.
Okay, um, so we're gonna talk a little bit about this methodology in more detail as we look at each asset themselves, that we even kind of think big-picture methodology of what we use for economic impact analysis, but how it's directly related to the city of Waterville and all of the work that was conducted. Um, so we're actually going to start with the Alphon Municipal Pool Complex. So we ended up, um, doing multiple economic impact analyses that we're going to review each one today. And then we'll dig in, as, um, Rachel and Dawn mentioned, uh, the industry analysis as well. I'm going to spend a little bit more time on the first community asset because each one is formatted similarly and we use the same methodology, which means they'll have the same outputs as we talk about direct, indirect, and induced impacts. I will note that the last asset that we talk about has a different methodology, but we'll review that together in just a few minutes. Again, for this impact analysis, we're really looking at visitors that are coming from outside of the city that are spending money in your community. Uh, the pool complex receives approximately 25,000 visitors annually, and about 40% of visitors are from out of town. So we assume that these 10,000 out-of-town visitors, which is 40% of the 25,000, um, spend about half the day in the city of Waterville when they visit the pool complex. So again, we're going back to what Dawn was just explaining about the methodology of the visitor spending baskets that we were able to apply to each asset and, um, what people were spending their, their money on, along with how much time they're spending in the community, based on the asset and the conversations and data that we've been able to pull. So as you can see on the left-hand side, and you'll see this for each asset, is the, uh, new spenders coming to the pool complex for half a day are spending about over $300,000 annually. So on the left-hand side, you have annual spending of what these visitors from out of town are spending their money on. It'll be different for each asset, um, along with how many people are coming in for each asset. Um, but I just wanted to spend a little bit of time here because we essentially took this annual spending number, which is the new money in the local economy, and that's how we conducted our economic impact analysis. So that's how we get our outputs at the end of the day. So on the right-hand side, we found that across the economy, over $372,000 in annual sales and $125,000 in annual earnings can be attributed to visitor, visitors of the pool complex. So again, these total sales and total earnings include direct, indirect, and induced impacts, and that is direct spending, business-to-business spending, as Dawn had mentioned, and also local employees spending money in Waterville. You know, having more visitors means that there is, uh, a general more need for business capacity, which creates jobs, investments, and new businesses, which we'll see as we look at each asset. So moving forward here, our next asset that we took a look at was the Alphon Youth and Community Center. The community center is home to so many amazing programs and meeting spaces, recreational facilities, and so, so, so much more. Uh, the visitation estimate for this particular asset is based on basketball programming numbers. So I know if, as soon as you see 7,300 annual visitations, I want you to know there are so many more people that come to AYCC. We're just looking at, again, basketball programming. So annual visitation to the community center for this type of programming um, is about 7,300 annual visitors, and 85% of those visitors are from out of town. So those out-of-town visitors are spending approximately a full day in this city. And as you can see, they're mostly spending money on restaurants, activities, and attractions. And again, you'll see that change as more people spend time within the city because more money is going to be put into the economy in Waterville. So when looking across the economy, we found that over $460,000 in sales, $155,000 in annual earnings are supported by out-of-town visitation to AYCC for the basketball tournaments and programming. For the Waterville Rocks Concert Series was our next asset that we took a look at. The Waterville Rocks Concert Series is an annual series held in downtown Waterville, um, essentially bringing live music, community connection, and cultural enrichment to the area during the summertime. Um, so there are over 2,000 attendees at the concert series, and of these attendees, approximately 15% of visitors are from out of town. So out-of-town visitors spend a So out-of-town visitors spend approximately half a day in the city and are primarily spending their money on restaurants, activities, and attractions. And looking across the economy, we found that $12,000 in annual sales and $4,000 in annual earnings are supported by out-of-town visitation to the concerts. Moving on to Purnell Wrigley Fields, we are looking at tournaments at the fields here, and they attract approximately 10,000 visitors annually, with an estimated 95% coming from outside of the city of Waterville. Of this 95% of out-of-town visitors for the tournaments, we assume that 74% of visitors stay in the city overnight and spend two full days in Waterville. And I'm mentioning this in particular, and I want to take a pause here for just a second, is because what's different than the other assets is you see a larger amount of money and accommodations rising to the top of how money is being spent within Waterville. And we got that 74% number from the Economic Contribution of Organized Sports Events and Sports Tourism in Maine report, which determined that of Maine sports-related visitors, 74% of people stayed overnight, and that was prepared by the Maine Center for Business and Economic Research for the Maine Sports Commission, which is a very long-winded way to say that for this particular asset, and for, we'll look at softball tournaments as well, we have about 74% people spending two full days and spending it overnight in Waterville, spending more money in the economy, increasing that accommodations number. The remaining 26% out of, out of town visitors are expected to spend two full days in the city, but they are going home in between to spend their night at their home. So they're not spending money on accommodations. Out-of-town visitors spending the night, again, is driving those accommodations and restaurant sales, and is a little bit different than what we saw from the previous, previous assets. But essentially, what we found from these results is that across the economy, over $3.4 million in annual sales, $1.3 million in annual earnings, and over 30 jobs are supported that can be attributed to the tournaments held at the field. So again, those ripple effects across the economy due to outside visitors coming in for this particular asset. Youth softball tournaments, very similar methodology as we're thinking about tournament days and multiple days. So we looked at the youth softball tournaments that are held on Waterville's four municipal ballfields. And these tournaments host 24,000 visitors annually, and about 100% of them are from out of town. So using the same methodology from studying the tournaments from the Purnell Wrigley Field, 74% are staying overnight, while 26% of visitors spend two full days in the city without spending the night. With over $7.4 million in annual spending, we found across the economy, over $8.9 million in annual sales, $2.9 million in annual earnings, and over 82 jobs supported can be attributed to the softball tournaments held at the field, or I should say, at all four fields. We also looked at Quarry Road Trails. The city of Waterville's Quarry Road Trails attract 100,000 visitors annually. Approximately 65% of the visitors come from out of town, representing that new economic activity within the area, as Dawn was explaining a little bit ago about people coming from Portland up to the trails or other places in Maine and New England and the Northeast. Of the 65,000 visitors, about 3% are overnight visitors who stay in Waterville for two days and are likely participating in special programs or events hosted by the trails. And we assume the remaining 97% of out-of-town visitors spent about half the day in the city of Waterville. That's why you see a fluctuation in accommodations and a large number of restaurant usage and spending. With over $2.6 million in annual spending, we found across the economy, over $3.2 million in annual sales, 1 million in annual earnings, and over 30 jobs supported can be attributed to the Quarry Road Trails. We have the Taste of Waterville as our next asset that we took a look at. The Taste of Waterville is an annual summer community event celebrating food, culture, and entertainment at the head of the falls in Waterville. The Taste of Waterville attracts approximately 7,200 visitors annually, with an estimated 31% of visitors coming from outside of the city. Out-of-town visitors, 11% spend about one night in Waterville, and the remaining 89% still spend one full day in the city. And looking across the economy, we found that 200,000 in annual sales and $67,000 in annual earnings are supported by out-of-town visitation to this particular community event. Our last asset that we took a look at, I'm going to spend just a minute on here, because this methodology is a little bit different. So the 16 collective parks are managed by the city of Waterville's Park and Recreation Department, plays a vital role in enhancing the quality of life for residents and visitors alike, which Rachel had mentioned at the beginning of our presentation. This methodology is different because the parks are free. So it's a little bit different in the way in which we actually calculate economic impact. And instead of that, what we actually do is calculate direct-use benefit, which is not a measure of visitor spending like we had just discussed, but it's really a total-dollar estimate of how much Waterville residents value the parks. So essentially, if the parks were not free, how much would residents be willing to pay to use the park? And so to calculate this value, we use Waterville's population of over 100, of over 26,000 people, and we make assumptions about annual visitation and the value of each visit based on information that we have gathered from the National Recreation and Parks Association and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So we utilize data from that in order to, again, use this calculation for the value. And we ran our analysis to determine that the direct-use benefit is over $2.4 million annually. Looking at all of the different types of amenities that are supported, all of the community parks that there are, this is really important to value the parks with total annual dollars, even though the value of the parks is so much more than that, because the quality of life aspects that outdoor recreation brings to the community is really important to note. And this is also a local benefit to residents, in addition to people, you know, coming and visiting the park system. So I'm going to take a second there, let that sink in. We will do questions at the end. I just have a few more slides. But that was the economic impact piece of the project. And in addition to that, we also conducted an outdoor recreation analysis in the city of Waterville. There's so much additional information in the report, and I wish I could go through every page tonight, but I encourage you to dig into it, because I'm just going to touch on some high-level key findings to wrap this up. So the outdoor recreation industry in Maine and in the city of Waterville contributed to $150 million in gross regional product and over $290 million in sales. And we are looking at 2023 numbers. In 2023, there are approximately 2,700 jobs, with average earnings around $32,000 in the city of Waterville. You can see here, we also included data on the state of Maine, so you're looking at percentages a little bit on par with the state. I do encourage you, as we conducted the analysis, we did compare to the state and also the county throughout the analysis. But just wanting to highlight all of the, the key findings here, as we're thinking about all of the contributions from the outdoor rec industry to the economy. In addition, just a brief industry overview, we found that the city of Waterville is growing in population and number of households. In addition, the city of Waterville has a younger population profile when compared to the county and the state, which we'll, we'll touch on in just a little bit as we're thinking about opportunities and strengths. And then in addition, you know, we really found that the primary outdoor recreation is about 1% of Waterville's job sales in GRP, but the supporting outdoor recreation represents over 15% of jobs, 7% of sales, and 9% of GRP. You're probably wondering, Tori, what is the difference between primary outdoor and supporting outdoor rec? Essentially, primary outdoor recreation are industries that include everything from skiing to boating to sporting and athletic goods manufacturing, so everything that the industry is directly doing. And you'll see a list in the back of the report that, of every single primary outdoor recreation industry component. And then a supporting outdoor recreation includes industries that make recreation happen and possible, and that includes anywhere from accommodations to food services, all the way to breweries and wineries. So really able to support people doing more in outdoor recreation as they're coming into the community. A couple of things I did just want to touch on here is, you know, we found that in the city of Waterville, there's a very large concentration of boat dealers, and the top occupations within the industry are in retail, fitness, and operations. This is a brief snapshot, but we want to show these key pieces of data, because essentially this is what helped us to look at the strengths and opportunities to consider as you're thinking about growing the industry of outdoor recreation in Waterville. So as we saw today, the city of Waterville has so many recreational assets, and there were so many more that I feel like we could include it in the report, but building on national trends and local assets by promoting and investing in them creates a large potential for the city of Waterville to become a hub for outdoor recreation and tourism. And expanding and maintaining trail systems and promoting boat landings to boost tourism, jobs, and accessibility by investing in trails, parks, and recreation, and water recreation is another opportunity. So as we, you know, went through this process, I'll stop providing the recommendations and opportunities, but as we went through this process, we really thought, here's all of this data. Waterville has all of these assets. Now, what are some ways to essentially leverage those assets, and what are the opportunities that you can think about moving forward? And I know Rachel in the beginning really talked a lot about the opportunities in economic development and how to incorporate outdoor rec and tourism and what that means for the economy. And these are some, just some different ideas and ways to leverage Waterville's assets in order to do that and think about those economic drivers. But the last couple I'll leave you with is really, you know, combining outdoor and cultural attractions by integrating, you know, museums with outdoor experiences to increase visitor engagement. And length of stay is really important. The longer people stay, the more there's going to be accommodations and money in the community. But also growing outdoor wellness and gear production by expanding fitness and wellness offerings and supporting local outdoor gear manufacturing to strengthen the economy and Waterville's outdoor identity. Ultimately, Waterville's outdoor recreation is more than just fun. It's a powerful tool for attracting people, boosting the economy, and fostering long-term economic resiliency. And with that, I will pause and go ahead and go into Q and A.
All right. Thank you very much. Any counselors have any questions with regard to any of the data that was presented?
Just a quick question. It seems like you got some of your numbers wrong. You used the reference of 26,000 for the population. Is that the population of the 04901 area code or Waterville itself?
It is for that zip code.
Okay. So you didn't, you took that into account when you came up with your numbers for the other stuff, right? Because the Waterville population is, is different, so when you're... I was just curious. Thank you.
Yes, for the industry analysis and the economic impact analysis, we use the zip code for both analyses. That same zip code for population and for pulling all of the numbers for the economic impact.
Yeah. And for the impact analysis, you know, we, that is the smallest geography that our data source was able to provide. So when we talk about the impact on the city of Waterville, it's more that larger kind of, that zip code area, but we use that as essentially a proxy, because we do believe that the vast majority of the impact would occur right within the city of Waterville, because that's where the largest, the most of the population is for the region, the services that people might be using. So that was, that was our approach for the methodology.
Counsel Green.
So just jumping off that, that point then, so the visitors coming from outside the city of Waterville, I mean, technically, it's the Waterville-Winslow, which is the 04901 zip code, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then, so the numbers you have on the left-hand side are all based on those numbers outside 04901, let's say?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I did wonder about numbers too in the very first example. 25%, 10, you mentioned 10,000 was 40% of 25?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
But it says 25% there, so should that be 45? Or 40? It did seem like a low number that was coming from outside of town.
Are talking about this? This slide here?
Yes.
So ours, yeah, our pool says 25% in the, where, yeah, yours is 40.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So that's just a typo then.
So yeah, so in our slide.
Okay. I'm sorry. Then that is a typo. And the report is 40%.
Okay. Great. Because I was surprised the number was so low. Thank you.
I have a question about what falls under the transportation bucket. You know, given that we have very little public transportation and/or, you know, cabs or, you know, like people that Uber or things like that. So what, what falls under that particular category?
Typically, that will, go, go ahead, Dawn.
You go. Oh. So that's going to include things like your fuel costs is going to be your biggest driver in there, in addition to whatever maybe limited public transportation options that you might have.
Okay. So people coming in at a gas station and buying gas, things like that. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Anyone from the public have a question?
Do you have any recommendations as to where we should focus if we have investment opportunities among all these different assets?
I would not say that we have a specific recommendation of which asset to invest in. I would say we have recommendations as far as when we're thinking about the industry analysis, some areas of opportunity that you'll see a little bit more detail within the report, but essentially, as we're thinking about, you know, the collective assets within Waterville and how to approach them in a way of, you know, strategically thinking about some of the opportunities for economic development to build off of, but maybe not necessarily which asset to invest in.
Yeah. And I would kind of build off of that, Tori. When I think about how to create the, the largest economic impact, the way you will do that is by having multiple reasons for people to stay. I think Tori touched on this, but like having a reason for someone to extend their stay so that they have multiple things for multiple members of their family to enjoy, so that they can make it a longer trip, so that they're spending more time. So I think it's really less about investing in a particular asset or specific activity, but really creating a well-rounded outdoor recreation and recreation diversified industry so that people can find things they want to do all year round, so that when they think about outdoor recreation, they think of Waterville, and that will really create that, the, the largest economic impact. We also saw a lot of great impact from many of the youth tournaments and the, you know, the, the fields. And so being able to create opportunities for people to stay longer after one of those events, because there's X, Y, or Z event going on for, if that's appropriate for a family, that way you'll get them to stay in the area longer and create those connections to Waterville and want to come back maybe when there isn't a tournament going on. So that's really, my recommendation would be to continue to build out well-rounded programming and making those, making it obvious all what's in avail, what's available in Waterville, so people know the, the well-rounded programming that you have.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. I, I appreciate that. Any closing comments from the council? Any closing comments from the council? Matt? Yeah, I mean, listen, I think this is, I think we've been waiting for, for this, you know, for a while now, and I think this is a fantastic thing, and I think, you know, now I think is a, is a great opportunity for us to kind of figure out, what do we do with it? You know, I think there's a lot of good ideas and a lot of things, and, you know, personally, I think, you know, maybe we should get together and get a small group together to talk about, like a recreation committee, talk about how we take this stuff in addition to the economic impact, but like what other, if we're going to invest in, like maybe talk about programming and expansion of program potentially or whatever, where does that fit? Like, I mean, I think this is a great opportunity, you know, for us to do that now that we have that, so let's set up a meeting. Yeah, that'd be really good. Awesome. Well, come on, associates, thank you very much. This is great information to have, and we appreciate all the work that you did, and yeah, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Have a good rest of your night, everybody.
You bet. Thank you.
Happy birthday to you.
All right. Moving on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. The Impact Task Force has made good progress in the last meeting, thanks to Chief Bonney running the whiteboard. We listed program weaknesses in the services provided, and we've listed goals for the task force. We'll review those and finalize at the next meeting and bring an update to the council and make sure we're going in the direction the council intended. That'll likely be at the August 5th meeting. The outdoor pool is currently closed due to the circulating pump burning up Sunday night. The pump is supposed to arrive, is it the pump or parts?
It's the motor to the pump. It should be here tomorrow.
Motor to the pump will be here tomorrow, and an electrician will install it as soon as possible, but then the pool water needs to be rebalanced, which I don't know how long that takes.
Well, yeah, thank you. We expect to open on Thursday. If all goes as planned, shipping, the motor's coming from Florida, long story short, we do have an electrician on standby. Hopefully, he can put the motor in tomorrow night, and the water should be very close to being balanced, as is, so it could use just a little bit of shock, but we're really hoping to reopen on Thursday.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. Surface paving has been completed on Avril Burley and Morro Court, but there will be some delay in the driveway pad paving and Park Street since the paving plant closed due to an event. No word when that will reopen. At the last meeting, there was some questions regarding the Pride Crosswalk near the library. It is painted by the Highway Crew. It was prepped today and it should be done tomorrow. A gallon of each color of paint lasts two to three years. And this will be Michael Hall's last week with the city. He's the city's community development specialist, and he's been here almost two years. Sarah Cross will be picking up many of his duties regarding grants and preparing the housing workshop in September. Sarah and I will be meeting with him on Thursday to review the transition, and we wish Michael the best on his new venture in Massachusetts. That's it.
Just to piggyback on that, I know, you know, Michael since coming here has been a valuable asset to us here in the city, and I sent an email this afternoon. You know, Waterville is definitely in a better place today than, than the day that he started, so certainly wish him well in his, in his new venture. I know he's touched a lot of folks, you know, dealt with a lot of folks here in the city, and we are having a kind of a send-off forum at Front and Main on Thursday from 5:00 to 6:30. So if you want to come on by and say, you know, thanks for everything you do, or good luck, that would be a great opportunity to do that. Okay. Public comments. Again, this is a time in which the members of the public can come and speak about anything that is not on the agenda of the tonight. Any citizens who do wish to speak are asked to approach the podium, identify themselves, and limit the comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Ms. Holden?
Hannah Holden, Ward 7. I'm here as the Chair of the South End Neighborhood Association. We've got an annual, our annual South End National Night Out Festival is coming up in August. It is the first Tuesday of the month, so it will be August 5th from 4:30 to 7:00. We will be, we're already starting to put up posters around. Advertising is fully underway. We've got a lot of support, community partners coming in, already RSVPing. One thing that I would like to kind of throw out to the council is last year, we were able to have a number of city councilors, as well as city administration, attend the festival to help celebrate that partnership, and it was because the council decided to move the meeting. So I would like to kind of pitch that idea, and hopefully you guys will take that under consideration because it's an excellent time to come out with your family, with your colleagues, with your community, and celebrate all of the hard work that I know the South End Neighborhood Association's been doing throughout the year, as well as our partners. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's a great event if you've not been. You know, I enjoy going every year and, and, you know, hanging and talking with people, so we can certainly take that back, so thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Dee, do we have anybody online? Thank you. All right. With that, I will move on to council comments and committee reports. Any councilors have any committee updates or comments that they would like to make? Okay.
I guess I'll just make a comment, which is, we don't really have very many committees anymore, and I second the mayor's suggestion that we bring back a recreation committee. I think we'd also benefit from having some kind of committee to move forward the types of work that Michael Hall had been working on with various groups, the resiliency initiatives, the tree planting, and, and just other issues that affect people in the city and quality of life. So I'm going to work on bringing a proposal to the council in the near future.
All right. Fantastic. Any other councillor comments? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda. Can I entertain a motion for the passage of the consent agenda?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to old business, Order 125-2025.
Approving the Washington Heights Municipal Tax Increment Financing District and Related Development Plan.
Move to adopt.
Okay, this is the second reading for this. Any councillor discussion? Any comments? All right, seeing none. Can I get a roll call, please? Sorry, order, can I get a, yeah, what do we need for this one? This is a...
Roll call.
Roll call, yeah.
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
No.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
No.
All right. And, okay, that was four, let me just write this down, four, two, thank you. Okay, moving on to Order 126-2025.
Accept purchase of a mass spectrometer for the Waterville Fire Department.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Cornell, this is the second reading for this. I know there's been some back and forth from our city solicitor with regard to the bid process. I know, Chief, you want to just, real quick, do, any guidance as to, with regard to this?
Well, have you heard back from the Mima person?
I talked to her very quickly this, this afternoon. She was hoping to get me an email out before the end of the day, but that didn't happen. They, by the sounds of things, and I'm just going to paraphrase real quickly what she said, they do not per se go out to bid. This is on their list of approved equipment that we can purchase with the money that we are allotted for the hazmat team. So this money was money left over from '21 and '22, I think, that we were told we had to clean up or we would lose. We thought that this piece of equipment is something that the hazmat team could definitely use. We talked to them about it. We looked into mass spectrometers, they're like 100 something thousand. We learned about this one. We gave them just kind of, this is what it's going to cost, and they, they approved it. We, in the past, have not gone out to bid for anything that's hazmat-related. We have a $20,000 trailer that we bought a couple of years ago that didn't go out to bid, and we have a $100,000 hazmat fire truck in the basement that didn't go out to bid just because we follow what they do, but we did just put a PO on it to save the price because the price increases quite dramatically is what they told us, so we can hold off, we can do whatever you guys, you folks would like us to do.
Well, if you're comfortable with the state's list, I think you can approve it. If not, we can at the next meeting have a order to waive the bid process.
Well, wouldn't we need that this meeting? We're essentially waiving the bid process if we, if we approve.
I've only been here two months, and I haven't seen you do an order on the floor, so to speak. I thought it was always bring it back to the next meeting.
Oh, so you're saying like you want to just, like table it to next week? Bring the order, bring the order back and then...
Table to...
Do the second reading for that.
So you're suggesting tabling this to the next meeting?
Right.
Okay.
All right.
I motion to table to the next meeting.
All second.
Okay. All those in favor? All right, thank you. All right. Thank you, Chief.
No, thank you.
All right. Order 127-2025.
Acceptance of Department of Public Safety Grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion with regard to this from the council? Seeing none. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
Okay. And moving on to Order 131-2025.
Accept grant funds from the Bill and Joan Alfon family foundation for payment of a $75,000 fee.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. This is the second reading from the special meeting that we had on Friday. Any councillor comment concerned? Seeing none. Dee, can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor DeBrito?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to new business, Resolution 134-2025.
Pointing a member to the planning board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Let me see if I can pull that up. So we did, we did post this, just, we needed to have someone in for the, the goal was to try to have someone in for the July 8th meeting, so we did post this for a period of about five days. We did not solicit any applications. We did have a couple of applications that were held over whenever people apply, people will randomly apply on the website for, as interest. So we did have some folks that were interested, did review those, those applications, spoke with Patricia, who was interested. She wanted to speak with somebody on the planning board. She did that. She thought it would be a good fit, as did the member of the planning board. So with that, I bring to you Patricia Flynn, who I believe is in Ward 4. I met her in person at the Juneteenth event at the cemetery. Very nice, very good background, and so I think she'd be really good. Good compliment. Any comments or concerns from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor? And any opposed? No, six oh. Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 135-2025.
Approve waiver of bid process for Sigma Tactical Wellness for the grant from the Department of Public Safety.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Chief, is this, yeah.
I have to get my steps in, that's why I go way back there again.
Fair enough.
You'll see that Sigma Wellness did send us a sole source provider. They did send that to you guys, right? Okay, I thought so. Basically, they're the only ones that provide that type of services where they come directly to us, into the police department and to the dispatchers, and do that right on site, and then they come back on site and deliver the results directly to us face-to-face.
All right, great. Yeah, no, you talked about this last, the last meeting. I thought this was a pretty cool thing that was coming down.
Yeah, we're actually pretty excited about this. And for us, we do have in our, in our union contract for our full-time employees, we do have something that, that is, that does go along with this, but we didn't have anything for our call force members, and I think that this is really important to help get, get them this type of wellness program. For, I have some folks that have been in the fire service for well over 30, 35 years. They've never had anything like this, so it's good for them to get this screening. It's very important to get this screening. And then for our new folks who are brand-new, it's very important to get this screening because it does give them a baseline to work off from, which we've never, this is new to the fire service. We've never had this type of screenings. So it gives us a baseline for our new people, but for our folks who have been around for a long time, this really takes a deep dive into their health and wellness and sets them up, so if we do find something that is of concerns, we can bring it to our PCPs.
Awesome. All right. Any comments or concerns from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Six oh. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Resolution 137-2025. 136, I'm sorry. Thank you. Just keeping Dee on her toes.
Approve bid award to Kyrian Inc. for the construction of Quarry Road Trails Project Phase 1.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Matt, you want to just, or, oh, Andy?
Andy wrote up the dogs.
Perfect.
I thought you were going to skip right over us.
No, listen, you know, like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So anyway, in your packets, you have the, the bid amount for Aquarian with all their alternates, and the project, so Matt and I have been dealing with MDOT. The final piece was a $200,000 grant that they're going to give us toward the road. We're both about 100% positive that we will get that. We, we do need that, we do, do need the, you know, the commitment and stuff from DOT in writing, signed off, but it's important that we get, get the award in place so that we can give a letter of intent, hopefully through the city, the interim city manager, because at least get Aquarian so they can start submitting their, you know, their pipes and mills to me, and I'm going to, I'll be the, you know, the engineer of record and stuff. So we, we do have to do a little bit of paperwork to get that last $200,000. As it is right now, we have basically exactly enough without that $200,000, but zero money in contingency, and I don't want to start a project with zero money. I've never seen a project that didn't hit some type of snag.
Sure.
So this, this gives us the contingency money. Some of that money won't be spent till next year. Even starting, we're already about a month after the bid right now, so, so this year we'll probably just get the base paving down, and then next year, it's kind of a better way to do it anyway. And, and I had that put into the bid documents anyway, that they would do temporary striping, so anyway, that's all we're looking for is to, you know, the... you know, to approve Quarian, you know, 100% with all the alternates, so.
And just refresh my memory. Are you now paving the entire? No, okay. This is just from, like, the hut back to the maintenance building?
Maintenance building to the welcome center.
Yeah.
And parking areas during the inch.
Correct. Okay. Parking areas, which are being created as part of this, all that drilling. Fair enough.
There's about 130 parking spots that will go with this paved parking spots.
Yeah.
And there's, there's 1,100 feet of road. And the one thing we're going to, one thing that we have the money for is part of one of the alternates, is to, is to put pipe under the road, which is future water, future sewer, future electrical, fiber optics, with spare conduits to go under the road. That way, we don't have to worry about trying to bypass it, get another DEP permit in the future. Certainly don't want to dig up what we just did with paving. So this will allow us to do all that. So someday down the road, if there's a large build, and the road is paved all the way out to the, to the end of Quarry Road by the apartments, that the water and sewer will be brought in, just dubbed in with, to this pipe that we'll put in under this project, so.
Perfect. Excellent. All right. Any questions from the council? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor? Six oh. Thank you. All right. Now, we can move on to Resolution 137, 2025.
Authorize the acceptance of a Stephen and Tabitha King grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Chief?
Yeah, so we wrote a grant. We've been looking to, trying to purchase a drone for the last year or so. With the help of Randy, we've been working on a drone program for the city of Waterville for the fire department. So last year, eight members took a class that allowed them to test out to become licensed drone operators. Randy has also written a couple FAA notes that will allow us to operate past line of sight, so we don't actually have to see the drone anymore. We can go farther than that. This drone will assist us in many purposes, but one of the biggest ones is, a couple times last year, we had water rescues, and they tell us about where they are in the water, but we don't know that until we get a boat in, and then we go searching. And if we're in the wrong spot, now we're that much farther behind. This will allow us to get the drone in the air and really search for them. It also allows us to search for lost children, lost people, which we do do that quite a bit throughout the year. Will help us tremendously with that, because the drone will have thermal imaging capabilities on it, so we'll have a thermal imaging camera. It'll also help us on fire scenes and building inspections. We've worked with the police department quite extensively on this. We took the classes with them together. We're hoping to purchase the similar drones, so that if we get up in the air, we need a second one, and they're busy, we can fly their drone and vice versa. So it hopefully is a big deal for the city of Waterville.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. All those in favor? Six no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. All right. Moving on to Order 138, 2025.
Approve 2025 Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation Grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Hi, Chief.
Hi. So this one's pretty straightforward.
Yep.
$40,000 to replace nearly all of our portable radios at the police department.
Okay.
What I think is unique about this, I want to highlight to you folks, is that this was written by a patrol officer that came to us and said, hey, I saw this opportunity. And as you all know, we've been working with the fire department to completely remodel our communications within the city to improve that. And it's something that, you know, very difficult bite off the apple for the taxpayer. And so I think it's important to recognize that even our youngest patrol officers are recognizing that we need to go out and seek alternate funding for some of these projects. And so this was a patrol officer that came to us, said, I see this opportunity. What do you think? And we said, go ahead and take a swing at it. And he did, and he got us $40,000. And so I think that is excellent. There's no commitment for the city, other than that we spend the money the way we told them we were going to spend it, which was on portable radios. So I think it's great that our patrol officers are doing that. It's great professional development, and I think it shows the quality of people we have working for us.
Yeah. I think that's awesome. Did he write the grant?
He did.
Yeah. Sweet. Okay. Well, hats off to the officer, is it Beneki?
It's Beneki, yes. Actually, he's a second-generation Waterville officer. His dad retired as a sergeant from our agency, so.
Oh, no kidding. That's good, good, good. Well, kudos to him. I think that's fantastic. I mean, I'd certainly love to see the initiative, and, you know, certainly it paid off. Any comments from the council?
I agree. This show of initiative by Officer Beneki is fantastic. So, that's great.
Awesome. All right. Well, with that, I will entertain a, all those in favor, please. All right. Six no. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to Order 139, 2025.
Accept a grant from Efficiency Maine for Level 2 Electric Vehicle Chargers Community Location.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Andy?
So we applied for the EV charger station grant, which we were awarded originally. And then, when the Trump administration put all the grants on hold for about six months, anyway, they finally decided to award the grant. Prices went up a little bit, but they wouldn't let us raise the price of our grant up. So anyway, this grant would be for $33,440. Total cost of the project will be, will be $40,000, $43,000 change. So next council meeting, we'll come in, I'll come in, and ask for an award to ES Bullis Company, who was the only bidder on the project. We had to go in, we had to go into the grant with a, with a contractor. So we'll be asking for, to waive the bid process, because we already had a contractor in line to go into the bid. They wouldn't let us go out to public bid after the fact. So today, we're just looking for acceptance of this grant, and then in two weeks from now, we'll ask for the, the waiving of the competitive bid process and the award to ES Bullis. And the city will have to come up with about $10,000 additional, which we plan, we hope to take out of the Riverwalk Reserve account. And the station will go right down by the, with the two, there's two handicap parking spots down at the, if you go down into the head of Falls, right on the left, is right where the transformer is. So the, it works out really well. But there goes the ES Tidred into the transformers. It's probably 15 feet of trenching that Public Works will do. And, and these, this station will be a credit card EV, EV chargers, so that, you know, the city won't be paying for any of the, you know, the electricity or anything.
So at the end of the day, we get one charger?
There's four.
Four of them are going to be down there?
There'll be four chargers, so four vehicles can charge at the same time.
Okay. I don't know anything about, are these all universal? Like, if I have, like, a Prius or Tesla, like, are they all, are they...
I, I think that, I don't know. Michael actually put the grant together. I'm not an expert on this stuff. I don't know if they'll charge Teslas and all. I think they'll charge everything else. I think that's how it works, but I'm not, I mean, we have, we have 10, 15 Teslas charging over.
Those are the ones that just came to my head. Like, I mean, every brand, I think, has an EV at this point, so I just didn't know whether or not they were universal, or they were specific to a particular car, or...
This is, yeah, and this is, this is per the state's requirements, so some of the technical stuff that we left it up to Bullis to meet. The reason is, it's hard to find people to bid on this stuff, because it's, it's, one thing is buy America, build America, which is something fairly new in the last few years. It used to be, the old buy America was American-made steel. Now it's buy America, build America. So almost everything, plastics, everything wiring, coatings, everything has to be made in the United States. So that's one problem, finding a supplier. And on a, this is relatively small project, and they also have certified payrolls, so you have to go into the Department of Transportation, I can't remember the name of it, the system. Anyway, so you have to find somebody that will do a $40,000 job, to deal with the certified payrolls, buy American stuff. Bullis has done these before, so they, they're familiar with this. And I called around, I think I put it in the packet, but different contractors that were pre-approved by the state and suppliers, and I could, I only got one bid, but, okay.
All right. Well, great. Well, thank you very much. What's the turnaround? Like, when, like, I mean...
It'll be, it'll be, on award, it'll be sometime probably late summer, early fall, but this will be up and running.
Yeah. Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. With that, any questions from the council? All right. With that, all those in favor? Okay. Oh, thank you very much. With that, I will make a call to the end of the regularly scheduled meeting. The city council is going to go into executive sessions to discuss labor negotiations, 1MRS 4-05, I'm sorry, 4056D. Can I get a motion to go in executive session?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much. There will be no other votes taken after the, in executive session or after, so have a great evening, everybody.